We'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I'd like to first ask you whether to stand and join or recite the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to be the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, can you please do the roll call?
Craig Kinsell.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Form, Kent, Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Sirk.
Here.
Okay. We're all going to chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting on June 7th.
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
I'll second.
Motion in seconds, approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, we have some of our police officers here. On the agenda, Chief Correll, which one do you want to do first?
Uh, the UTV.
Okay. So Luke Ruffal's here.
Our UTV is just about as simple as the police lights and sirens and we're waiting to get it decal with police, but Luke here is our EVOC instructor and he talked to me and I'll let him explain from here.
First, right now, this is a draft that I made. I don't think I probably even think you have one, huh?
I saw one in email. Again, I have.
I have. I'm good.
What does EVOC stand for, Lenny?
Emergency Vehicle Operation. So, we have never had a UTV before, so therefore we needed a UTV. That's okay. I researched the departments throughout the country who already had it in place and have awarded it to our benefit. As with all emergency vehicle operations, nothing changes in the difference between a squad car and a UTV. Officers are still required to follow laws and drive with due regards. Couple law points that I put in on the first page, now I'm under procedures. Officers must complete their initial probationary hiring period before they're allowed to operate a vehicle. And officers who have been in multiple vehicle accidents can have their privileges, their UTV privileges revoked by the chief or who he chooses. On page two, it allows for officers to use the UTV while on duty and while off duty, and those criteria is listed there. Officers must immediately notify our county dispatch that we will be in an UTV instead of a squad car. Officers will be required to inspect UTVs before use as well as after use, document any needed deficiencies. And on the last page, the two main things that differ from the city's UTV ordinance and the police departments is that UTV is considered an emergency operational vehicle. It'll be able to be utilized by our staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, any time of the day, on any roadways needed. And that will allow us to be able to respond to calls in the UTV, specifically in the River Greenway, and then I mean, things like that, we'll be able to access those type of areas that squad car can't. And lastly, the UTV will not be able to be used in pursuits. Able to assist and apprehend people who potentially run away from vehicles, but it cannot, it will not be able to actively pursue vehicles. So if we were to conduct a traffic stop and they flee from us, then we would have to radio to squad cars to hopefully pick up a pursuit. Those are the main goal points. And the three pages, like I said, I was able to get most of this. Those different departments around the country who have this, I think, could meet all the standards that we need.
Luke, the one we have, how fast does it go?
It can go almost about 60 miles an hour.
Really?
Me and the city mechanic run the back burner. It was raining on 200, it was raining that day, we came back on 200 East. There was a lot of puddles, but we had a high of 51 miles an hour, but if you're going a little faster because of the weather, we didn't push it, but it does go at a good speed on it.
Yeah. So you like this, Chief?
You know, the guys are always kind of about driving it, but I think Luke is right, we need to set some rules on it. I know it's going to be a nice thing to drive around, but I want that, the guys to enjoy it and use it, but also use it as control, they're happy to wear their police attire, something that seems like they're police, their firearms, not just take a joy riding, go get ice cream with the family, it's going to be used as an emergency vehicle.
Yeah, I think over the last few years, we've seen some instances where it would have been nice on the River Greenway Trail or even just along the river. So it'll be.
As expensive as the thing is, we want to take care of it. No one likes to have boundaries per se, but we want this to last for years to come. That way everyone can use it.
Good.
So is this something we have to make a matter of record or accept them, or is it just?
You can make a motion to accept and approve the UTV, that's okay.
Do you have any issues with it?
I'll make a motion to accept the UTV standard operating procedure.
I'll second it.
Motion in seconds, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thanks, Luke, thanks for doing all that.
Thanks for the work you did on that.
Yep.
You got it catched.
Oh, yeah. Need another?
Do you have a second part?
Yeah, one other thing real quick, I forgot to make some points. I want to remind everyone to please silence your phones if they're not silenced already. Please silence them.
Oh, thank you.
Remind everybody these meetings, we're going to be respectful and courteous, and that public comment is allowed at the end of the meetings, limited to two minutes per person, and limited to agenda items. So I just wanted to make those notes real quick.
Great. Force of science.
Okay, second part, I'll make a request. I would like to have authorization to take $3,000 out of the Betty Walters fund for our training. Right now, I didn't budget for this, for this year. I do have some money in my local law, but if I send these guys to this training they want to go to, it's going to eat a lot of it up before the end of the year and I have guys going to other commitments like lock armory and read interview school and Trent's going to a defensive tactics recertification, but I would, I'm asking for $3,000 to go to this training. In the police work right now, it's very common that I'm getting use of force reports about every other week, and everybody is not compliant during arrests, so when they're physically arrested, they have to do a report. And Garrett, Trent, and Luke, and Mark, they are core trainers of the police department. We are pretty much almost self-sufficient to train our own guys right now. We spent a lot of money the last several years to have our own trainers, not to rely on outside departments that we have in the past. These guys are the training board, these guys say who goes to what training, these guys do the training schedule every year, and they do a great job. They take a tremendous amount of stress off me, they just come to me, hey, this is our sending in, and I say, okay, I'll make the arrangement, but these guys do a great job. But they came to me about this force science certification course. I mean, it's in Nashville, and to send each officer, it's 1650, $1,650. And I'll let you explain, let them explain to you why they need to go to this training.
So this is basically, it's a 40-hour course, so a week-long, high intensity, it's a very intensive, thorough class course over use of force. And this is the, this goes behind the science of using force in policing. So this is the psychological, the physiological part behind why an officer uses force and his performance of his duties. So this course will help better, this will better train us to, so that we can testify better in court, that we can train our guys how to testify in court, and train our guys on, you know, what's going on in an officer's mental state in a high-stress situation. Why did he do these things that he did? And today's day and age, law enforcement has changed significantly since Ferguson, Missouri. It has changed, and it's changing every day. I mean, it's basically the war on police right now. We don't see it so much in our community, but we do. I know I'm going through a civil suit right now, so we do get more and more lawsuits to this day. So this training will, this will better prepare us for future law enforcement. Ever since Mike took over as chief, we have completely revamped our training, and it's gotten significantly better for policing in 21st century. And this would be another step in the right direction. So, my duties on this police department is I train everybody in my eye of defensive or physical tactics instructor for the state of Indiana. So, use of force, physical use of force, that's what I train officers on. Because you have to be trained, certified through the state of Indiana to do a certain pull, okay? How do you, how do you use force without being brutal, okay? How do you fight fair? That's, that's how, that's what I teach our guys, but also how do we do it and be safe at the same time, protect ourselves. Derek, he helps me out with the physical tactics instructing as well. So this, this will better train us to write better reports, testify better in court, interviews, memory recall in high-stress situations, how to do better internal investigations. So I'll turn it over to Sergeant Lochee.
A couple other things that'll help us with, like Lenny said, we're the core instructors. Having this certification and knowing the ins and outs of what force science deems as physiological and psychological key points is going to help us tailor our training for our new guys. If we know what the after-effects are, we can kind of try to simulate the best we can so that we can address it in a controlled environment before we have an actual live event, so that we've at least touched base on it and seen it in some fashion, especially with us having a younger department. We want to know how these guys are going to handle those types of things if it does come to be in a controlled environment. Another aspect of it too is we also review all use of force reports that come into the department. So if any of our guys have a physical confrontation of any sort, they do their use of force report, it comes to us, and we have to look at it and deem and justify if it was a good use of force or not. We're kind of just doing that right now off of common knowledge and what, what we feel is reasonable, but having this certification under our belt from who everybody is saying is the go-to in use of force science would help us, when we sign off on these things to say, yeah, as a, you know, subject matter expert, I agree with this use of force as opposed to just, you know, yeah, Sergeant Lochee agrees to this. Like Trent said, I help him out with the physical tactics. My other responsibilities are as a tasing instructor. So any tazings, anytime there's a tasing incident, I have to review that and go off on that. I'm also the less lethal shotgun, which would be like your beanbag shotgun, I'm instructor in that, so there's a lot of avenues in this that I think for me personally, having this certification would be very, very helpful.
So this is to send to you two?
Us four.
Us four.
Four.
One reason they wanted, we talked about the four of us, was with us being sergeants, if I get involved in something, anybody in my shift, I'm normally working, so I get, I'm involved, so I'm part of that use of force, so I can't review my own, so it's best I have somebody else to be able, plus we have four different eyes looking at it. Been on the department for a long time, I've been DT instructor for 20-some years, I've been training coordinator for years, so it's going to make the department a more well-rounded department for us to be able to utilize this, to come in, because we review, right now we do the Monday night quarterback, just off of experience, and we, I take my knowledge and yeah, we probably shouldn't do it this way, but now we can plug and look at those videos. It also incorporates in that training, if you look at this, de-escalation is a big thing right now. So it incorporates that in that certification, the de-escalation and body cams. They talk about that as well, so it's things that we can bring back and it's going to benefit this department as well.
When Lenny sent us an email about this, I was quite honestly shocked to hear how frequently you're in physical altercations, in arrests.
Yeah. The state of the world right now, unfortunately, the criminal element's kind of emboldened, you know, because society as a whole, they watch, you know, the news, there's a lot of anti-police out there, and it does, I've seen it on my shift, it's emboldened people to, you know, buck us back a little bit because, you know, the media's telling them to. So, yeah, it's gone up.
And it's a young department, so it also gives us availability to show their performance, to review somebody and see how they're performing, and I can critique and use, like Derek said, in our training, which we do monthly now, to try to make those officers better in their job performance and their de-escalation, so it doesn't get to a point to where we get civil suits or possibly getting charged with something.
Ultimately, we're going to have to have more training, I mean, we just got to be better trained. And like last week, I mean, we had an officer, some of the officers know this, no idea, I mean, it's just, we can never have too much training. So for us to be able to do all the training ourselves, that ultimately saves us a lot of money, because we can, we have a lot of experts now in a lot of different avenues of law enforcement that are state-approved instructors. Now, we don't have to go somewhere, we can do all these trainings right here.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for stepping up and wanting to better yourself as police officers, and also increase the knowledge base of the rest of the police force. You're absolutely right that this use of force is a hot topic nationwide. You guys have to make decisions in a split second sometimes, and that's not always easy. I wouldn't want to do it. So thank you guys for doing that and for wanting to go to these classes and wanting to train the young guys. I do appreciate it.
We owe it to our officers as trainers, as Derek and I are FTO, we're the first guys that the guys get, three of us are sergeants, all four of us are instructors, we owe it to the guys to provide them with the best training possible. And this training, we can't get it in Fort Worth, we can't even get it in Indianapolis. This is a, they only do this training in major metropolitan cities. Chicago and Nashville were our two options. Just last year, we had an officer in Adams County be criminally charged over use of force incident. Nobody wants any of us to have to go there, but, and I understand that this is an expensive training, and, but ultimately, if it saves us from just standing all suit, it pays for it.
Right.
And if we can provide all these guys with training, because after the incident last year, every single one of us has that in the back of their mind. And like you said, we have split seconds to make decisions. We're thinking about what another officer did that got, they got in trouble for, that may be the difference between whether we go home or not. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
With that said, I'll make a motion that we accept the opportunity for them to take that training.
So they're asking for permission from using the Betty Walters fund, right?
Right. I would make a motion that we allow them to use the Betty Walters fund to do the training.
I'll second it.
Motion in seconds, any more discussion?
If you guys have any questions, feel free.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nate Simpson. Let's talk about fireworks, correct?
Yeah. Just wanted to do what we did last year, have a little private event. I just donated all the fireworks for the Homestead Housing Edition. We want to do it on July 1st this year.
Is that Friday?
So just close down that Middle Stone Drive for the day, and we'll have everything cordoned up. I spoke to Jeff, and he's got the insurance and everything. We've got insurance for the 4th of July shows as well, already.
Okay. Looks like it's signed off by all the department heads. Any questions for the Homestead Edition?
Can anybody come to the Homestead one, or?
Yeah, just whoever wants to come.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks event.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, thanks, Nate.
That's July 1st.
July 1st, Friday. Do you want this in?
I saw fireworks last night.
Right.
Near, huh?
Out your back door.
Wasn't our neighbor, but near.
Okay, yeah, wait till 7:00 for the public hearing, so. Yeah, we have some other event forms we can go ahead and do. So we have event forms for Downtown Decatur Days as well as Decatur. Craig, Wiley, do you want to discuss one of those?
Sure. I can't remember the date on the Downtown Decatur Days.
July 9.
July 9, the Main Street Organization would like to have a Downtown Decatur Days, they're going to have wrestling on the plaza, they're going to be events, the stores are going to be open. We've done it in the past, it's been a successful event, a Main Street event. I would ask that for a motion or approval for that event to carry on for this year, 2022.
Police and fire are going to participate this year, and they're going to have booths and have some things for kids to do and so.
I thought you meant wrestle.
Huh?
I thought you meant wrestle.
We can have a wrestling match.
She is requesting street closing to Second Street from Jackson, to Court Street and Madison Street by the courthouse.
I think the reason they wanted that was that they need electricity on Madison Street between Second and Third, and then if they needed additional area, we could close off court. Court is not really etched in stone, but if we could set out the barricades, I'm sure we could get them set up by then.
Second is from Jefferson and Jackson, right?
Correct. I'm sorry. Yeah, but we'll leave Monroe open.
224 states open.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion approved, Downtown Decatur Day, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Then we have Decatur, which is this Saturday night, or Saturday all day, I think they start the, the cooking contest starts in the morning, right?
Yeah, there'll be people that'll be staying overnight, coming in from out of state or whatever, and they want to be able to hook up the electricity, block the streets. I think this setup will take place after the concert on Thursday night, which would be Friday. Checked with the fire, the police, and then also Jeremy with the city employees to help do the setups.
And the street closing is for First Street from 445.
AM.
Yeah.
Probably through 10 o'clock.
On 2.
Yeah, that's a Friday night prior, because they have to get their cookers fired up and stuff to do.
They're going to go on First Street, is that what it says?
That's what it looked like, yeah. I should have submitted a map, I apologize, but pretty.
Ben Skrulling. I make a motion to approve that as well.
I'll second.
Motion in second to approve Decatur for this Saturday. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Seven oh one.
I have one more. This is for a classroom meeting on Madison Street on July 15th from 6:10. They're expecting 50 people.
What date is that? I'm sorry, Phil's.
July 15th. And they're requesting the restroom's electricity and sound system.
20-year classroom meeting. Just kids, huh, Scott?
Just kids. 2002, is that right?
Yep, 2002.
Hmm. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. So we need to do the public hearing before.
Yep.
Yeah.
I want to suspend, we need to suspend regular meetings.
Public hearing.
Yeah, we need to go into public hearing for the water rate change.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the council meetings.
I'll second.
Motion second to suspend the council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
I'll make a motion that we open up public hearing.
I'll second it.
Motion second to open up public hearing, amended water rates and charges, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
All right. So within the public hearing, the public has an opportunity to weigh in on the proposed rate changes for the Decatur water system. These rate changes are being spurred by the repeal of the utility receipts tax in House enacted Act 1002. Because of the repeal of this tax, the state legislature has mandated all city utilities to adjust their rates for the revenue that would have otherwise been collected by the utility receipts tax. This amounts to approximately $34,363 in annual revenue to the city of Decatur and will result in a reduction of water rates by about 27 cents a month per user. So, is there any comment from the public on the proposed rate adjustment? Anyone in favor or again, if you'd like to have an opportunity, you can do that now. Otherwise, if we're hearing no public comment, we can close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Yeah, reopen the council.
I'll make a motion that we reopen the city council meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Probably do need to make a matter of record that the public hearing was advertised.
I'll make a motion, matter of record, that the public hearing was advertised. I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, so now we have the final reading of ordinance 2022-9, amended water rate and charges.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2022-9 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Ordinance number 2022-9, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended rates and charges for the use of and the service rendered by the Decatur water system.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-9 on its third reading.
Second. Motion in second, roll call vote?
Craig Kinsell?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sirk?
Yes.
Okay. We also have. While these are being signed, we can do, we have a final reading of ordinance 2022-10, amending chapter 155 of Decatur code of ordinances regarding flood hazard areas.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2022-10 on its third reading by short title only. I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Ordinance 2022-10, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapter 155 of the Decatur code of ordinances of 2015, is supplemented regarding flood hazard areas.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-10. I'll second.
Motion in second, roll call vote?
Craig Kinsell?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sirk?
Yes.
Okay. We have. You have updates and housing requests from Adams County Economic Development.
All right, well, thank you all for the opportunity here tonight. As I do, I come to give updates every now and again throughout the year, just to be aware of what the UTV has been doing and what we're going on doing, to this, that opportunity here so far this year. So first thing I want to go over, obviously you can see the package I gave you. So first thing I want to go over, obviously you can see the package I gave you. We did complete our rebrand in April and launched that. That included the logo that you have on the document, our new website, which we're very proud of. So if you haven't checked that out, please do so. Again, very proud of that website, very proud of the logo, the work that you've done, really stretching the face of the EDC. Our logo and website have gotten pretty old, I think, from the beginning of our existence, and so we're happy to see that refreshed. With that, new vision and mission is there, our district's mission. EDC's mission to cultivate a strong economic future so Adams County residents and businesses have every opportunity to thrive. We certainly believe in that with the new brand, our tagline is building community and changing lives. And then I did there on your document, we've got three different variations to go with, depending upon what the marketing material is. So do that out there for you. Quick update, quarter one, quarter two highlights, and then even a little back into last year. It's been a pretty busy year, as you all know, attraction-wise. We've seen a lot of interest, I think that's just the way the economy has gone, this year is going to last year. There's just a lot of demand there through the economy, which means you've got to keep up with that. And we've got products that people want in Adams County, so that's a great thing. So worked on and won three different projects this year. That's 260 new jobs and $4.6 million worth of investment. Two others that we have worked on, one currently that is, I think it's somewhat been announced, most of you are probably aware of it. Champion is the one I'm referring to, and they're reopening. So those numbers will jump up, probably in my next report when I come and we're able to include those. Business retention and expansion, things are going well there. Obviously, the biggest factor we faced is workforce. We need people, but the huge aspect of what our existing businesses are facing needs the new business that we want to come here. They have to understand the reality of our workforce and our very low unemployment rate, the number of people we have in our labor force. We've seen since the beginning of COVID, the labor force, the number of people participating in the labor force drop about 400 people. Where those 400 people are, there are a lot of different... There are people you could probably go into, but that's a big loss when you look at the number of jobs that we have and the need that we have currently. So while business is doing well, and our existing businesses are thriving, workforce is kind of the key component there. Big component as we look into the future, certainly sites and buildings. We don't have a large inventory across Adams County. Decatur is the only community in Adams County that actually has any sort of inventory, building or site. And what we have here is just the site. I did provide the second page of the package, which is, that's just what I use from a marketing perspective. If somebody requests information from me, this is kind of the first thing they're gonna see. It outlines the parcels we have and the industrial part, some of the information about it and how to reach out. So I just wanted to provide that because I didn't know that we'd ever seen that, and with our updated writing, I thought it was important. So as we look to the future, certainly we'll look to expand the inventory we have of building and site, but we also have to take into perspective the new workforce issues and how grateful we're gonna be in the business attraction. RLF loans, we've been able to work on several of those this year. We currently have two applications, one of those has been approved. If both of those get approved, that would be $450,000 here in the year of 2022 that we've given out in RLF loans via the EDC office. So pretty happy with that, we're aware of another loan that potentially will come in at some point in time as well. So all that being said, and I ran through that really quickly, good, good year so far, we're really proud of what we've done. This is more snapshot at a very high level, there are a lot of things that we get into on a daily basis, whether it be early learning in the grant we received last year to develop at the Merritt Center, to stem work at the Merritt Center, all sorts of things that we kind of dabble into from an economic standpoint, quality of life standpoint as well. That's kind of the overview, happy to answer any questions you may have before I jump into the second part. Seeing that, I'll jump right in. To the second part, try to go with what I had mentioned in the first, which is workforce. We all understand workforce is a big issue, but with that, and again, looking at who's in our workforce, the people who are going to work are working, right? So if we're going to gain employees, we've got to look outside of our borders, look at people who are driving in from other communities to work at our businesses, whether that be from Fort Wayne, or Jay County, Wells, Ohio. How do we capture those people and get them to be here and live here? To do that, to attract people and families here, we need homes for them to live in, that's a big deal. So earlier today, before coming over here, I did a quick search on Zillow to see how many homes were listed within the city of Decatur. There are 18 homes available within the city of Decatur. I shouldn't say homes, there are 18 listings within the city of Decatur. Some of those may be homes, some of those may be locked, but that's what we have available. Across the county, we have 26. That's not a lot, right? And so we really need to focus on housing. If we want our businesses to thrive, they need people, we need to find a way to get people here and have homes for them to store. So with that, the EDC has been working and put together a subcommittee out of our board to really put a strategy together on developing housing. Not just doing, this isn't a study, we're not studying our housing, we understand we have housing needs. This is the strategy that's actually gonna develop and build housing units, whether that be multi-tenant units, single-family units, retirement villages, whatever it is, this is gonna be the strategy behind it. So what we're doing there, we certainly, we've got a fundraising amount that we're trying to reach to be able to engage a consultant to help us work through that. This consultant, if we're able to fundraise and can get the funds we need, would essentially be an arm of the EDC. They'd be an employee of the EDC hired to work on housing with us. And so the EDC has set an amount of money there, $40,000 of our own funds to do that, but we also want the municipalities to be bought in. And so what I'm here doing tonight is requesting some funding to help us reach that goal. I'm going before and doing these reports before each municipality, as I always do, and I'm making a funding request from each municipality for this housing initiative. So to kind of go through just really quickly what that housing strategy will be, I provided a couple of documents that really outline the steps that would be taken to see that come to fruition. I'll briefly go through, the first one, set the table, that's just putting the subcommittee together, getting the leadership of the community around the table to really be able to drive this forward. We don't want to put a committee together, develop a strategy, and then not do anything with it, right? We want the people around the table who are really gonna drive this forward, define the market situation. That's just understanding, you know, what type of housing do we need? Is it apartments, is it single... What can our market withhold? What's going to be affordable for our workforce? We don't want to build apartments that are $1,200, you know, per unit because our workforce here locally isn't gonna be able to afford that. So we want to make sure we're building units that are affordable for the workforce that is here in Adams County. And also looking to the future of what type of workforce we want here as well. Jumpstart the market, so that's really springing things, taking what we understand, having the leadership of that group really drive that forward. And then we're gonna pivot to production, so that's the execution part of things. Certainly, the first thing we'll do is try to find a catalyst site where we can develop this somewhere within the community. And when I say community, obviously that's the broad community of Adams County, not specifically Decatur. Well, Decatur's a huge part of that, we're looking across the county at the different opportunities. We're gonna ramp that up and then just optimize and empower it. So we envision this not only being something where we're developing housing, but what are the funding mechanisms that are gonna help people get into those homes? Down payment assistance, things of that nature that we can take, put in place, and just allow it to wash, rinse, repeat. So that's kind of the overall thinking there. Where we're at from a funding perspective, we've got the EDC in, we've got three different banks, First Bank of Burns, Three Rivers Credit Union, and Farmers and Merchants Bank, who have all contributed to this effort. I have been to the town of Geneva, and they have committed their municipal dollars to this. The way I've done this is broken it down similar to CEDIT, I take the percentage of population, and that's how I come up with a request for each municipality. So the request for the city of Decatur on a two-year basis, so this is a two-year contract that we have with the consultant, the total request over those two years would be $13,939.56. Broken down, if you wanted that per year, that would be $6,969.78 per year. I will say the town of Geneva decided that they would just give us the full amount for the two years, rather than half one year and half the next year, but we are able to do that. So my request to you would be that the city of Decatur buy into this effort, buy into this strategy to the tune of $13,939.56 over the course of two years.
I have a question, Phil, if you don't mind. A year or so, we engaged in an increase of our donation or our opportunity to give to the Adams County Economic Development of 3%, I think we raised it 3%. Do we have sufficient funds to take care of that $13,000 plus dollars in that amount if he needs to request?
There should be, yeah.
Then I would make a motion that we...
And I'm happy to request we use that additional percentage that is liable to the EDC for that.
I think it's already been budgeted, and all you have to do is request it. And I'd make a motion that we accept a request from Adams County Economic Development to utilize those funds that we've already put aside for this project.
I'll second. It's important, we have a couple of big employers in here, they want people to come here and live in homes and work at their places.
We need places for them to live, that's for sure. So motion second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign. All right, thanks, Cole.
Thank you, Cole.
Thanks for the report, Cole.
Max, oh, Max is here, I guess we can get him up here. We're gonna talk about 138 North Second, we talked about it on the Board of Works, but I think you wanted to make sure Max is here to approve.
All right, so I sent everybody this drawing to give to me from Lumberlost. Before I get into this, I'm gonna back this a little bit and give you an update on 138 North Second Street. Lumberlost is as far as they can go for the time being until the Masons come in. They're gonna replace the majority of that wall along the alley, but everything right now is structurally secured. So that's worrying off my mind right now. I am very thankful that we started on this project before that storm hit last week. I don't know where that building would be if we wouldn't have started on that project. Probably be in the alley up against Los Pita. But that beam that was across the front was not tied into anything, it was just wooden. So Lumberlost went in, drilled holes through the beam, ran one-inch thread of rods, lock nuts, washers, tied it all back in beams inside the building. They did take all the lath off the second floor ceiling, exposed the rafters, and to our surprise, a lot of those rafters are in really, really good shape. We were expecting to have to replace them, but it's not gonna be a case now. So a little over a week ago, Mike Schwartz from Lumberlost contacted me. An idea of putting some bracing between 138 North Second Street and Los Pita, actually Mike said, Max, Max's idea.
Good job, Max.
Basically, it's not needed support, but it'll be extra support for the two buildings. And with that structure there, we could do a number of things with it, decorate it, take the lighting from it. You could fix it up for all the seasonable cables, whatever, kind of give the alleyway, which is now pedestrian walkway, a little bit of a disaster, I guess. So basically, I sent this to you guys through your review, and you turned it, but Mike has said this is no expense to us. Won't cost us anything, it'll be included in the bid, part of it that he has. So I just need the okay.
What size of the beams, what's actually being run?
Actually, they're gonna run a double two-by-ten ledger system on both buildings, and then they're going to screw hangers on both sides in about eight different locations and run double two-by-ten treated material in each hanger. Now, there is about 28-foot in from Second Street, a light bulb on by AT. That's why they elected to use screws and not nails, so this way they can just back the screws out, take the beams down, and AT can get in and do their thing, you know, put the beams back at once.
Is there a height that makes sense?
14 feet.
Okay.
To the bottom.
What kind of maintenance are gonna be on these beams that they're with?
They're treated.
Life expectancy?
Uh, all treated material rods are up there.
Yeah, I just wondered, would you want to go with aluminum or something like that? I just wondered, would you want to go with aluminum or something that's more permanent, and I'm just asking.
Or just wrap them, or?
Will they wrap them in vinyl or anything, or?
I can ask them, maybe when I head to the call. I mean, right now they're giving this to us for free, we may have to...
I'm just saying, whatever it is, if we can avoid maintenance or having to deal with it in the future, I think it's just a good idea if it meets Main Street's Design Committee's recommendations, because I think we want to make sure that we cover that too, don't we? Max?
I haven't talked about it yet.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to bring it up. I don't want to delay it, Kirk, that's not my goal, but I just want to make it a permanent solution instead of a temporary fix.
Well, we've got some time, I mean, this will be the last thing they would do.
You want to draw something up, Max, and run it by Main Street's Design Committee and make sure that we approve it?
I have another question about that also, I was talking to Wiley about it. So would Main Street be in charge of the lights and decorations? Somebody needs to be in charge of that, so we don't run into a situation where Max sells his building and we sell the other building, and somebody comes in there and hangs whatever they want to from those beams. I don't know if that's a Main Street function or a city function.
My opinion and what I've read in the bylaws is that it's a Main Street recommendation to city council. That's the way it rolls.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Or would ownership of the beams be?
Yeah.
I guess that's what you're asking.
Being it's in a city alley, it'd probably be ours.
If I can say, I did have an idea for like lighting and stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, we could take care of that, but you guys, of course, could approve it. Kind of like Fort Wayne's done in some other alleys, not just stream stuff, something a little more fancy, something a little more artsy or something. But I would do that, you know, because you've already kind of took away, through the alley for us to do the outside dining, outdoor dining, which we still would like to do at that point then, I thought about some kind of... But of course, it'd have to be, but we would make it through Main Street, make it through...
City council, did we already do a memorandum of understanding for you?
We did.
Yeah, and the building fell down.
Scott, to your point, the city would likely need to be a party to any memorandum of agreement that would be signed related to the alleyway, and who would maintain responsibility for maintenance and any kind of...
Decorations or?
Yeah, aesthetics that would go within it. So it would be the city, the owner of 138 North Second Street, which is currently the city, and Max Miller is owner of Famous Monster, so then that agreement would be recorded. So those kind of details would be outlined within that, and then it would be a recorder document.
I don't have a problem with it, we just follow those rules or guidelines.
And set up that memorandum of understanding.
We've already got a memorandum of understanding for the use of the alley, don't we not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hasn't been renewed for this year, it was last year, but then had to be voided for the building.
You're pretty happy with that type of determination as a property owner next door?
Yeah, I understand that, it's my alley, I understand, I just hope to use that, but you know, I did.
You want to write something up then? Okay. So the channels we're gonna go is that, the channels we're gonna go is that you'll draw something up, Max, that you'd like to put there, you'll get approval from Main Street, and then we'll bring it in front of council for approval, and we'll have a memorandum of understanding on the future? Okay.
Do you want to talk to Lumberlost about the type of aluminum or?
Not until you get the drawings, but if you were just asking if we would make alterations to that.
I can talk to him and tell him to give me an option, sort of what he thinks he says. Like I said, this will be the last thing that this building's building.
Okay.
Good?
Yep. Thanks.
Okay. I think we have a declaratory resolution on Hoosier Pattern and R H Warehouse abatement.
Please look at table from the last meeting. You have two there tonight to answer any additional questions you'd like to have. And we also have four or five before you repeat some of the figures. Let me let you enter and calculate it. You and you would be here to answer questions.
The question last, or two weeks ago, was that we don't really have a structure of how we do abatements. I think that was everybody just kind of putting their heads together. And I sent, I reached out to a few other cities to ask them how they, how they do abatements and what they look at and how they weigh it. And a couple of cities actually responded. So I think even after this one going forward, I think we need to look at some kind of a plan, a structure in place that keeps it consistent on how we look at abatements. So that's something we'll have to work on over the next couple of months to get something in place that, you know, rather than being subjective, we just, you know, we have some numbers and we look at them and figure out. And I think economic development needs to be involved. I know Columbia City, their economic development gets involved with all their abatements for the city, so.
I typically, I mean, I typically review any abatements that come through. I will say the City of Burn and the town of Geneva do have a formal process, application that any interested business has to complete and score based on points.
Right.
That determines whether you pay the payment, leave it, amount.
Right.
That's certainly something that we can put together for.
Right. And that's what I believe Columbia City and New Haven both answered back, that that's what they have. They have a scoring process.
I think that was a lot of Tyler's questions last week.
Right. Right. So do we need her present the data now again, or what?
So if you would like an overview, they could review or summarize, but it had been discussed last week. The petition had been presented. The petition for the tax abatement is in good form, and it would be up to Council to accept the petition and move to adopt the declaratory resolution. So within that, there would need to be some preliminary discussion about the length of time that the abatement would be in effect.
This was for ten years, correct?
Correct.
I would make a motion to accept that the abatement proposal was presented and investigate going further.
I would second that motion.
So motion is second to approve the abatement as requested and then look at our process going forward after this.
With help from Colton and Economic Development. I think what we've run into is kind of followed what's requested. Not necessarily wrong, but I just want to be, have a fairness to anyone coming before us.
So motion is second. Are there, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Thank you.
Keep going.
Yeah, we have to the resolution yet.
Entertain a motion to...
This would be 2022-11. Okay. I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2022-11 by short title only. I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Declaratory Resolution Number 2022-11. City Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, declaratory resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the application of Hoosier Pattern Inc. and R H Warehouse LLC.
Make a motion to pass resolution, yeah, pass Resolution 2022-11.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Thank you.
We'll do a public hearing on July 5th and then be able to address the confirming motion. I'm sure Audrey does, but I can email her as well.
What's it?
This was the declaratory resolution, so the second part is to post notice for a public hearing to allow public comment and input for the potential tax abatement. And then, once that public hearing is held, Council will have the opportunity to do a confirming resolution, which would actually give effect to the abatement.
Yeah. You want to sign this?
Yes.
Jeremy, you want to come up and talk about trash cans? I think you gave up some... Jeremy's got some color schemes.
Just a quick, I passed out the colors. And these are just basic colors. It's just something that I pulled out that was kind of neutral, kind of off the side of other contractors, so there wasn't a lot of confusion on collection of these cans for you. We need to get these ordered, but I'm just kind of giving you guys some examples here of what it looks like with the gray. There's a lighter gray and a darker gray, just kind of, there's a bunch of different other colors, but if you get in and want premium, you can get in actual pieces and stuff with the other colors, so. Just kind of looking for a little feedback. They're holding our price a little bit here until we make a decision on which colors. If we like the gray, one of the grays, and if you want white or you want gray letters.
Right. So basically, he's got the colors, the two different colors, the layers, the one for trash, one for recycling. You have the wider green print, and then you have the different colored gray.
I like the green font. Yeah. I like the gray. Green font, like our logos.
As long as price is the same, I like...
The price is the same. When you get into a lot of the other colors, it's when your price really goes up.
That's not necessary.
And we need to stay away from blues and browns from the private industry.
Blues and browns and yellows and black and some of those other colors.
The grays actually look really nice. I mean, both of them, the lighter and the darker.
Either or with the gray, but I like the green. Stains out more.
Light or dark?
What you think on that?
Those sand, you have a preference, light or dark?
Mr. Getfert, you're a marketing guy. Light or gray?
I'm sorry, I was...
Green or white?
I was writing notes. Jeremy, I'm sorry.
I'm white, so...
No, I like the dark, I mean, I personally like the dark gray, the green font.
Right.
But I forgot what it...
I like the green sticker with the yellow.
The darker gray?
Darker gray.
Dark gray, green.
Darker gray and green.
You got your answer.
Okay. Just a quick update. We're probably looking about a month or so before we start the sale. These carts will probably take a little bit longer than that, but there's some things we need to do for Lumberlost to handle. Once we get some more firm numbers, we need to talk in the next meeting or so about some particulars on how we're going to get this voucher and how we're going to get them. So I'll probably jump on the next four or five meetings, but probably...
Yeah. We got to make sure we get it out to public before we go full scale with it, so.
Yeah, we still may be looking at September before we get totally going, but we need to...
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Do you already see when the trucks are arriving? Do you already see when the trucks are arriving?
I don't know. Phil, some discuss volunteers handling money. So what that was about is, like at the Hive, they have a part-time director down there, and they're looking at maybe having some volunteers fill in so that she can work some hours a month. So there were some questions about if it's a volunteer, not a city employee handling money, how do you, what are the internal controls? How do we deal with it? I think you reached out to the State Board of Accounts, right?
Yeah. So I'll kind of read what State Board of Accounts answers to me. He said, "You may want to have a similar discussion with an attorney for their legal perspective, which Anne has can add to this. We recommend discussion with Council be considered. From an auditing point of view, you should consider this person's access to cash and accounting records for internal controls. We recommend checking with your crime insurance provider, as the volunteer may not be covered under the policy. Also, check with the provider for a liability standpoint, what would happen if this person became injured while volunteering. Another avenue might be checking with some other cities in town to see if anyone else has had volunteer help and if they have any advice." So I checked with our insurance company, and the employees are bonded, but volunteers aren't bonded, so I don't know if they'd actually be covered, but I don't know if there's something that they can sign, that they take off the liability, but handling the cash, I'm not sure. I mean, they could work in the Hive, but just say, "If you want to purchase something, you need to come back tomorrow," or just take their name, or I don't know how you want to do it. I guess you guys just need to think about it. How you want to handle volunteers, if you want volunteers looking at your time.
But I guess like the hospital, their gift shop, those are volunteers. Other organizations have volunteers. You know, how do they work around that?
That's what we need to find out before we have this discussion.
Right.
Right. So that's a good, that may be a good avenue to check at the hospital, but from a legality standpoint, it's not that, it's not permissible to allow, but it is more of an accounting issue, and the State Board of Accounts is incredibly strict about making sure that we have appropriate internal controls in place and making sure that we have several different means of being able to track and trace with handling our resources and where those resources are at any given time. And if there are missing pieces, that we have the ability to go back and see where that money was at what point and who was responsible for it. So it's kind of up to Council to help develop those internal controls in the event that we are comfortable allowing volunteers to work at the Hive and sell art and take cash for it. If we go cashless and they're only allowed to use credit cards, that may be, that may be a route to consider too, so that you're not dealing with physical money.
Another aspect is having multiple people, not just one person, having at least two, three people, because that's, actually, that is part of internal controls.
Right. So this is an issue because we're selling other people's products?
So at the Hive, we sell the artist's work, but the city receives a commission. So because we, we own the building, we have a 20% commission on any art that is sold there, and so that money has to be accounted for, and it's part of our budgeting and part of what is reviewed by the State Board of Accounts. And so we need to make sure that we're, we're very particular about who's handling that and that we have a good handle on what, what money is there at all times.
They really want to pay cash, can they come to City Hall? We have somebody here that handles that.
Sure.
Somebody that jewelry stores.
It's a matter of developing the...
What happens when it's an evening event?
Right. We got a good problem. Our part-time director is starting to fill the place up with people and art. She's doing a very good job.
She is.
Marketing it, pushing it.
Right.
And the part-time might turn into full-time. It continues, but she just wants some help and...
I think there's a lot of options with credit cards and Venmo and PayPal and Cash App that you could get around it somehow. Some locations do, they write up front saying we don't accept cash.
Yeah. But then you got your transaction fee, is that built in, or does the city eat that? You know what I mean? I think it's just something we need to work out.
Yeah.
But I still think that anybody that's going to accept cash ought to go through the internal controls that we've went through.
Right.
They need to watch those videos.
Go through that torch.
Yeah.
They don't handle any cash.
I concur. So is that something we need to make a decision on tonight, or is it something we need to be thinking about and get, put together a plan?
I don't know. They handle their volunteers.
Okay.
And we can reach out to a couple of our cities too and see what, what they do. I think she just want to get in front of you guys because it's, you know...
I think it's a good idea.
It's getting busy and busy.
I think we need to involve Jamie too. Because she's the one that's going to coordinate events with the Hive.
We limited her hours so much that she can't get it all done.
Right.
But I think the hospital is one good example, so.
Parking wrecks probably is too. How we, how we handle volunteers at the parking wreck.
Okay. We'll look into it some more. Thanks, Ross. Do you have anything else other than this? Mike Webb, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, I look like I've been a, some documents out. Appreciate it. First, I just want to thank you, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to speak about, from my own experience and research, this is very concerning, but I thank you shared by many in the community regarding the perpetually pending issue of the I O Properties petition to rescind Decatur Ordinance 130-2. I know from just the general perception, from just the way things are going and from comments you've brought from the last meeting, many of you are tired of the issue being discussed. I assure you, everyone is. However, I want to remind you that this vote is perpetually open, that Council taking action. The one vote in the negative that was taken, obviously there were comments that this would be revisited, but even absent that, it would still be something that's perpetually open to, to a vote on rescinding that order. So the reason so many people here are so concerned is because of that. It's a perpetual issue that's constantly on the minds of many of us. As you're all aware, on May 11th, I did file a access to public records request for the city for documents concerning basically studies performed by the city and Councilmen determining whether or not to rescind 130-02, as well as any commitments made to representatives of I O. As of yesterday, I did receive one bit of information, that being the packet provided by I O in support of their application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for conditional approval of their, their use of the property. I've not received anything else. Certainly, I know it takes time to pull those things, so please understand, given the limited information provided, I am a bit, had a bit of a handicap in providing this and presenting the plea, but there's a great deal of discussion in the community now about a potential July vote on the rescission. I'm forced to proceed now with limited response. I come to you today with three specific concerns. In my opinion, each alone should make voting to rescind or amend 130.02 anathema to your charge of office. In each case, I have provided what I believe to be authoritative documentation on the concern. This includes statistical studies, hedonic regression studies that are specifically set up to avoid outside biases and to control conditions or inapplicable situations that would render the facts questioned. I have provided a total of four dockings for you. I'm going to summarize those briefly and then speak briefly to each. Number one is a letter from me in which I detail the findings of my own expense appraisal of the Environmental Protection Agency's ECO database. I've talked some about this in some individual comments, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak more generally to that. This shows the consistent violations endemic to this type of business that's currently being contemplated by I O Properties and which as of this moment remains rightfully against the Decatur City Ordinance. That's to submit, that's to supplement the study, which is item two I have given you, the Environmental Integrity Project's 2018 Study Water Pollution from... the Environmental Integrity Project's 2018 study, water pollution from slaughterhouses, which in addition to being peer-reviewed science, statistically accurate, was also allowed as evidence in federal court in the EIP's successful litigation to force the EPA to review and tighten up their woefully deficient slaughterhouse protection standards and enforcement. Third is a June 2009 peer-reviewed study by Dr. Linda Kaloff of Michigan State University entitled Slaughterhouses: An Increased Crime Rate and Empirical Study of Spillover from the Jungle Into the Surrounding Community. I did include a single addendum to that. I did not staple that to it because it's not part of that report and I didn't want to imply any authoritative information other than just my commentary, but I do want to address it because it pertains to both it and the next section, which is final. Item four, a May 2022 study by Patricia Elmagar. She's a well-lettered and well-lauded expert in the field of real estate law and specifically real estate appraisals with the industry-leading firm of Cone Resnick in Chicago. It's a study in which she confirmed through hedonic regression analysis of thousands of real estate transactions, the significant reduction in property values in the vicinity endowment of slaughter facilities, including slaughter facilities without an attached feeding operation. This was performed in response to the attempted opening of a cattle processing facility in a community in Franklin, Wisconsin. It had to be commissioned by the citizens of Franklin after their own city council took statements from the proposed builder to be sufficient justification and failed to heed the citizens' request for a study to find facts regarding real world property values. And then finally, I'd like to take each of those in order briefly, and I'm trying to be very respectful of the time. IO Properties representatives stated repeatedly of various PR functions and in response to media that pollution must not be a concern because they're going to be so heavily regulated. And the fact of the matter is that at their catered PR event last week, they had promised that members of IDEM and EPA were going to be present to be questioned about that. Those were not present to be questioned about that. Those opportunities failed to arise. However, as I detailed with the ECHO EPA reports, as well as the study on the pollution that is endemic to this type of business, it is an ongoing problem. I dare say routine and regular violations of clean water and clean air acts happen. Listed out a number of Indiana facilities that in particular have been in consistent violation for years at a time, with the budget for IDEM being cut so much that they have very little left for enforcement. There are many continually violating operations that are allowed to continue under their own recognizance, basically, and there's no change. If you look through the 24 that I supplied, you'll see that. I also provided examples of the JBS facilities, including the Plainwell facility that, as you know, Jason Breen visited recently, as well as a lot of similar sized facilities in Missouri. I selected Missouri because they similarly cut the budget for their state environmental management organization, and this, I believe, shows a glimpse of what future compliance may be. I believe the evidence is clear despite promises that the industry is so regulated there would not be pollution issues, that it shows it's the norm. In fact, this facility would be out of the norm in not polluting the area. The second document, again, is, it authoritatively supports the concerns. It's a rather dramatic and depressing finding about that. Again, this document was used in a federal lawsuit against EPA, which has forced them to reevaluate their slaughterhouse pollution standards. It is well researched, it is well annotated, it has been peer-reviewed and found to be accurate. These two documents have me asking to the council what level of promised economic activity, not even realize the promised economic activity would justify near certain damage to the environment and the livability of our community? How much in water sales justifies the odors and the issues that are going to come, not just from the facility itself, but from the pollution that is discharged into the water? Second, a Dr. Kaloff study about slaughterhouses and the effect on crime in the vicinity. It's scientifically thorough in its methodology, it's horrifying in its results, it's well-sourced. The facts are supported in real-world examples, and again, they utilize statistical methodology to remove bias. It shows clear differences in the rate of violent offenses, including rape, sexual assault in communities with such facilities, including a very high rate of domestic violence in such facilities. There's even a logarithmic scale of predictive values for the increases in arrests for violent offenses, including domestic violence, rape, and sexual assault. It already controls for key values that could otherwise bias the results, the number of men in the population, population density, migrating, migration, racial backgrounds, unemployment rates, using binomial regression to assess individual arrest and report variables. Unlike manufacturing sector jobs, so unlike boat manufacturing, RV, CNC, consumer products manufacturing, furniture manufacturing, industrial machinery manufacturing, just about anything else you could put into an industrial park, there's a measurable increase in all of these crimes in the vicinity of slaughterhouse and with employees of a slaughterhouse. All of those other manufacturing sector jobs actually reduce, and it's documented, reduce the number of those crimes. For that document, I just have how many crimes committed to our neighbors are acceptable in the light of a potential increase in revenues? How much of an economic cost is that going to be to all of the citizens in increased insurance costs as crime rates go up? What research has been done into the number of additional policemen that would be necessary in the same action as rescission? As the chief was talking, use of forces off, and crimes are happening here. Our town is below average in crimes that are committed, and we love that about it. That's the reason my wife and I moved here eight years ago and consider this our home. There's definite effects, and our full employment status exacerbates this issue, as we would have to be bringing in employees specifically into work in a facility like that. Finally, and thank you for your forbearance on time, I'm proud if I'm homeless finish, we come to the representative, the representations or other of IO Properties, that there be no damage to property values in the area. And for that, I do have this study, again, by Cone Resnick. They are leading, leading law firm appraisal. It's a peer-reviewed study. In addition, it relies on eight university studies that all come to the same conclusion. To support their application, IO provided a single appraisal from an Ohio firm. Yes, that Ohio firm is licensed in Indiana, but it was independently contracted by IO on a property in an adjacent subdivision. Now, I'm not aware of any other studies that have been performed by the city. I assume there have been none or any other appraisals that have been done to sustain what they had to say. But the study by Cone Resnick, again, shows significant loss on local property values in the vicinity of such a facility. These facilities have a specific downward pressure on property values based on proximity. Properties within 1.25 miles of a facility suffer up to 26% value loss, and properties within a town with such a facility often suffer losses just from the association of the town. They also confirm that the properties most likely to suffer those losses are higher value properties. All in all, this study directly contradicts the result of a single appraisal contracted for by the petitioner themselves, and it's offered by leaders in the field, supported again by hedonic regression analysis over thousands of transactions around similar facilities. I added the personal addendum to this, a note based on the properties that were hand-selected. I did receive a copy and thank you, Ms. Rasm, and thank you to, thank you to Kirk for providing the application that was provided by IO. In their appraisal, they selected four properties as comps for their assessment. Basically, in an appraisal, you pick a comparable property in order to assess the value. The four comps they provided, three of them were in urban Green Bay, Wisconsin, in the immediate area of JBS Green Bay. One's in Marshalltown, Iowa, next to a swift processing facility. It's worth noting, Decatur proudly is 3% below the national average in the commission of violent crimes. The Green Bay community, which again was hand-selected by their, their appraiser as a comp, is 36% above the national average for crime. The properties hand-selected by them, as indicative of, and a comp to this property that they were appraising here, was 15% on average below the median home value in Green Bay. The Marshalltown, Iowa comp, again, hand-selected, is in an area of 24% higher crime than the national average. That's 27% higher than Decatur, and that comp property is 60 and a half percent below the median home value in Marshalltown. Worse, the answers given in public statements by IO seem to boil down to neighbors in adjacent properties knew what they were getting into when they bought next to an industrial park. This ignores a critical fact. The slaughterhouse was well aware, whenever they bought this property, that it was illegal to operate a slaughterhouse in the city. So if the principle of caveat emptor should apply, it should apply to them as well. If we want to talk about personal responsibility and decision-making, the use that they proposed was illegal when IO bought a property next to that neighborhood full of citizens. I have to ask how much of a loss in property values suffered by our neighbors and our most valuable asset, our home, is justified by purported increases in economic activity? And if there are any other studies that have been done, or any other appraisals that have been done, what credentials do they have that outweigh Cone Resnick, eight peer-reviewed scientific studies, and the industry's own trade journal, the appraisal journal, which also documented this information and is mentioned in the study? I just believe that this path leads not only to extreme loss in the character and livability of our community, but also the value of it, and the ever-lounging possibility of this vote coming up at any council meeting, as long as it gets onto the agenda, is tearing this community apart. It's challenging our very idea of small-town harmony. It's causing disharmony and animus among the people, between each other, and it's caused, unfortunately, some animus between citizens and members of this council. And I believe that voting in favor based on these limited facts provided mostly by the petitioner themselves is not just political suicide when the bet likely fails, but worse it's committing civified and killing a vibrant community just because millions of dollars in retaliation. I appreciate you taking that information into account and researching the documents. Again, they are all very well sourced and the source documents of information within. I thank you for your time and your forbearance. Do you have any questions? I'm sorry, I guess I should be doing...
I think you've given us a lot of information that they just...
Certainly. And I know it's a lot of dense information as well, but if there's any questions, you know how to reach me. I'm glad to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do you have anything else? Department of Public is also here. Jeremy?
Last week, obviously, we had a navy of a storm. We've been working since, oh, last Tuesday night, Monday night, Tuesday night. We're still cleaning, picking up brush, sticks. We're getting pretty well caught up. We just need to encourage the citizens, if you have stuff in your backyard, I need it or have to curb it, so you can basically, um, will not come in your yard, your backyards, begin to stuff it, it needs to be out to the gutter. We are finishing the hydro flush this week. We are having some leaks due to dry weather, so you guys have been working quite a bit extra trying to get, and it'll be some, so, so, following that, thank you.
Thank you. Kirk?
We're good.
Jeff?
Yeah, our Thursday open houses that we've been having, we're averaging about 50 visitors for the last three weeks.
Wow, great. That's great.
Two more weeks of it, and one other thing, we had a lady ask if we've ever had Chad stickers. What they are is a sticker that goes on the car seat, that has the name of the child, any emergency contact or doctor. We do have some of those now. So if people need them, we have them. I'm going to give some to the PD also, and they can also hand that.
Okay. Will you explain that to the media afterwards if they, if they have questions? Lenny?
Yeah, two recent graduations, last Friday, Blake Brooks and Ken Anarko graduated from Keanan Academy, so they're back on duty as of Monday, so try to have them back. And Corey Hamm just returned back from Jacksonville, Florida. He is now a certified DRE, which is drug recognition expert. Incost is proving anything except $20 on fuel to drive back from Indy, and I'll label him free parking at the airport. So the only cost of that whole training was $20.
Thanks for being frugal. Bill, anything?
No, I'm good. At all, Department of Public.
Anything from council?
We got a pretty good show coming up this Thursday at our summer concert series. I don't know if you read the newspaper today, but we have a new reporter that did quite a bit of research on, what's his name, Doug? Doug?
Hembridge.
Anyway, read about it, but it should be a great show. It starts from 7 o'clock and goes until 9 at the Madison Street Plaza. Come on out. Hopefully, the heat stays off and everybody enjoys it.
Who else?
Along with Decatur Saturday, VIP tickets are still sold, well, not VIP, but general admission can be sold the day of, and also you can get them for pregame at, at the Decatur Chamber of Commerce if you want to, if you want to go to Decatur. And that's Saturday, I believe, it's from 4 till 8.
Yes.
We'll be setting up Friday.
All right, anyone else, council? Okay. Anything from public?
Hemthorn.
Hemthorn.
I've got two seconds, completely different subject.
Okay.
Just kudos to the Department of Public works. After that incredible storm, they're, and they're doing an amazing job that they're getting everything else, so kudos to them.
Yeah, I was, I was out at midnight that night and saw those guys all over the place, and then again, early in the morning, and they were out again. Most people don't know what the streets looked like at midnight. They weren't very good. So them, the fire department, everybody was out like crazy that night. You know, again, thank you to all you guys for doing all that work.
It was a good teamwork between the fire department and the fire, just to try and get out of the main state. You know, when that wire's down, it's crazy, and they just drop cars.
Yeah.
And I can say, um, cooperation with that.
Yeah, that was great. Okay, anybody else from public?
Don Gephardt, on behalf of Rev, Fleetwood. I'm going to try to tie this to economic development. My first city council, so I have to, you tell me if you fight and come back in two weeks, I'll come back and do it. But many around the community have seen some changes to our facilities recently. We just want to make sure the message was clear to the city and to the community. Got some notes here. Fleetwood RV, Holiday Rambler, American Coach are some of the most iconic brands in the industry, with a long tradition of excellence and a proud heritage of promoting travel into the outdoor recreation. We are grateful to the community and all of the support we've received for over the years. And in effort to build on the momentum of our success and unify within our local community, we will be strategically, strategically leveraging the legacy of the Fleetwood brand. Fleetwood has called Decatur home for nearly 50 years and is a stakeholder for the industry for almost 75 years. Our facilities will take on the Fleetwood name. You may have begun to see these changes and will continue to see updates throughout the community. Make no mistake, this is the important part, we are still maintaining the Holiday Rambler American Coach lines, and we are still Rev. We are, there's been lots of questions about whether it's sold again, or we're still Rev, we're still part of Rev Group, our parent company in Milwaukee. We just want to honor the legacy of our brand. Fleetwood, that's been here and indicated for several years, and go along that legacy. So I just made sure the city, the mayor's office was aware of that and up to speed. That said, again, if I need to come back in two weeks, I can. We did approach Jeremy and Chris at the Parks Department. We would like to change the sign at the sports complex to be the Fleetwood Sports Complex instead of the Rev Sports Complex. We were asked to come in front of the city council to get permission to do that. We will take care of all costs incurred in that change, but...
They gave enough for the park, I think we can help with the sign.
Following that up, I think there's been, the last time that anyone from the city has been into our facilities was the former mayor and other city council. So we would like to extend a formal invitation for the city, mayor's office, and any working the offices to come take a tour of our facilities and...
Great, great.
Motion to pay the claims?
Second. Motion is taken to pay the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion is taken to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.